Good evening again. At this time, we're going to call the regular council meeting and executive session are to order. I'm going to ask Ms. Wanda to read the clerk report of compliance.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
At this time, executive session.
Discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body for the detention center, information technology, human resources, administrative services, engineering services, and development services. The next item is discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property, the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice related to the pending threat and a potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim related to tax map number 0632614001 and 0632614002, banking matters, and nickel plate MCIP and exit three. The next item is discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or extension of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body for prospect that date.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
At this time, I want to call for motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion, go into executive session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session. Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order at this time. We're going to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation by, um...
Councilman Rouse.
Councilman Rouse.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for all that has come in to make the decisions to betterment of the county. And Father, I pray that you give us guidance and wisdom as we come here tonight to represent all people for the county, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Approval of the consent agenda? Oh, come on, let's just say it here. I need to call for a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any motions coming out of executive session?
Yes. I move to authorize the administrator to request an amendment to the option contract on the Weathersby property as discussed in executive session to include a price adjustment and the extension of the option period until June 10th, 2024.
Do it here, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove number 18 bid presentation to the national board, since it's a presentation, it shouldn't be in consent. I approve the consent agenda with removing number 18.
Motion, die for a lack of a second.
Second.
Die for a lack of a second. She looks, let me see if she can explain it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of regular agenda? You're here, a motion?
Make the motion.
You're here, a second.
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, presentation and proclamation. We are so happy tonight to have with us Mr. Craig Nguyen and Daniel Burton of the South Carolina DOT. They're here to give us some updates and project summary for Jasper County. Craig, we thank you so much for coming to do this for little old Jasper County. We just want to let you know, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And the chairman is not here due to the fact that he's in Washington, and he asked me to be sure to let you know how much we appreciate this.
You're welcome. We, as part of the duties, I enjoy giving them and keeping, you know, everybody informed of what's going on. So I'm going to start off and talk about 95 widening and kind of where our interstate program's at, and then Daniel will talk more on some of the local resurfacing projects and the future construction projects in the area. So kind of the agenda, we've got the overall DOT updates, we've got some interstate updates, and the project backgrounds for I-95, zero to eight, updates on where we're at with that one, and then the resurfacing updates. So kind of, one of the first items we want to update is SC DOT named a new Secretary of Transportation. He was named on January 18th, appointed on January 18th by DOT Commission and confirmed by the Senate on April 2nd. He was previously DOT's chief operating officer, so he was the number two that got moved up. And as part of that, he has appointed his leadership team, which involves four deputy secretaries, so three of them are in new roles. Deputy Secretary for Planning Brett Ruiz is still staying in that same role. He appointed Rob Perry as Deputy Secretary for Engineering. He was our, previously our Chief Engineer for Bridges. Carl McCotry was the, he was previously our Director of Human Resources, now he's the Deputy Secretary for Finance and Administration. And Jen Necker is the Deputy Secretary for Intermodal and Freight Programs. She was previously the Acting Director of Mass Transit and Freight Programs, and prior to that, the Low Country Regional Production Group Engineer. So you can see over the last 15 years, we have dramatically increased our work program. I updated this slide last week, and the previous slide for this was five billion. Now we're up to $6.2 billion in active construction work at this time. So this is our 10-year plan, so we're heading into the fourth quarter of our 10-year plan, and then we'll be moving into a future Momentum 2050 plan. So we have completed 1,009 miles of rural road safety projects, so that is to reduce the fatalities on, we're looking for a 20% reduction on the worst 5% of our system. So, you know, there is a significant, on those rural roads is where we have a significant amount of our fatalities. On our paving program, we have completed 8,800 miles of resurfacing in the state. We've also started on 349 bridges, and we have 109 miles of interstate work underway. And then, kind of, this is something that we're kind of dealing with right now is the impacts for inflation. You know, once in FY 1718, you know, once in the gas tax cost 114 miles of two-lane paving. In 2223, that dropped down to 91 miles. So with that funding for those programs staying pretty consistent in there, you know, we're getting less resurfacing done for the same amount of money, and that's, that's across the board, that's nationwide, those issues are, every DOT is dealing with now. So we'll talk a little about our interstate program. So we have the fourth largest state highway system in the United States, and the third fastest growing population nation. Currently, we have 46 miles of interstate complete, 61 miles under construction, roughly $2 billion, and another 250 miles in planning. So you can see this, everything circles kind of our future interstate program over the next 10 years. If you look down on 95, we've got 24, 26, 28 for those sections. So those are going to be coming back to back to back all the way as we come up 95, so that's the first 33 miles, and then from 33 to 86 is in planning, on kind of delivery for those scheduled, those are, you know, beyond the start, the end of those projects. And so at 26, we're kind of hopping end to end. 95, we have the 95-26 interchange that's under construction right now, that's a design-built project, so that's been procured. I expect to see later this year them starting to move dirt on that project, significant work on that. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about I-95, zero to eight. So this is the first 95 project that we are trying to accomplish in this area. So it is a 10-mile corridor, it starts in the Knox Brook Creek Bridges in Georgia, so that's the second bridge inside of Georgia. Yeah, Savannah River Bridge and Knox, Knox Brook Creek Bridge is the next bridge, we just start just on the South Carolina side of Knox Brook Creek Bridge. Then we go up, it's about a mile north of Exit Eight, once we tie the Exit Eight interchange down. So the purpose in need for this is to improve capacity, mobility, and operations, and address operational deficiency along the corridor. So, you know, operational deficiencies are interchanges, trying to improve those interchanges. We've got some improvements at Exit Five, Exit Eight. Kind of overview, we're going to widen from four to six lanes for the entire corridor. Bridges, we've got five, uh, four, five sets of mainline bridges, so all of those are being replaced, then we have the John Smith Road overpass that's being replaced as well. So we got Savannah River, Savannah overflow, St. Island Swamp, the SCL or CSX Rover Bridge, and then the SC-46 Bridge. So the SC-46 Bridge was a prior project that we have developed that we're just going to incorporate in this project, so it's a consistent corridor. Then we have two interchanges that we're doing. So we have Exit Five, which is more frontage road relocation and some ramp modifications, signalizing those ramps at Exit Five, changing some of the turn lanes, extending turn lanes, you know, improving, that's more operational. Exit Eight is a complete interchange redesign from the current Diamond Interchange to a diverging Diamond, and includes two new bridges that'll be built adjacent to the existing bridges, one on each side. So we have 14 bridges in this corridor and two interchanges, kind of walk through where they're at on the map, so you can see where, where most of the bridges are down in the Savannah floodplain area, Savannah River floodplain. And then, there's also the potential and hope that Exit Three will become part of this project as well. Then we have the five interchanges, 46 Main Street Bridge, John Smith Road Bridge, and Exit, Exit Eight, US 278. So one thing as we're developing this is the work, as we kind of look at how we develop, going to construct this, Exit Five interchange, that work will be done first, then they'll jump to John Smith and do that overpass, because John Smith will be a closing detour, and then they'll go up to 278. So we don't want the interchanges under construction at the same time John Smith's under construction, kind of stat, jumping through those, making sure that we have the ability for traffic to get where they need to go. So this is the diverging Diamond at Exit Eight. So this is going from four to six lanes. One of the big changes that we've had to make for operational efficiencies here is the relocation of Medical Center Drive. So we had to push, it's about 600 to 800 feet further east. Basically, as we looked at interchange types, every single thing that we looked at, that intersection, that signal there was backing traffic up onto the interstate, and so with this being an interstate project, our function and goal of this is not to back any traffic up on the interstate, get that traffic on the ramps and go them through the interchanges. So in doing that, we've relocated this signal, we've, we have coordinated with the hospital, we've coordinated with the businesses through here. So as we go through 278 in this area, we're looking at some access management, closing some driveways, building baggage routes on each, basically every quadrant except for the southwest quadrant, does not have a baggage road for it, and all those businesses will have one driveway for a shared use driveway. And some of this is to help also facilitate future development in the area, it's coordinated with some of the developments that are happening around Exit Eight. So you can see there's two new signals at the ramps. Diverging Diamond is, you know, very similar to the first exit into Georgia where you have the crossovers on top of the bridges. So at this interchange, we have a heavy left turn moving south towards Savannah. So at that first signal coming, if you're coming west on 278, you would cross over and be on the, the left side, and make, so your, your left for that ramp is basically just a left, instead of turn across traffic, you go directly like a right ramp would be. That's the same thing on the other sides as well, so it improves and it reduces those conflict points through your interchange. John Smith Road, this will be a closing detour. We're doing this bridge on alignment, we're lifting the bridge up, I think it's about four or five feet, we have to go higher with this bridge to clear the interstate and the depth of it, so it does push out a little bit on each side. I think we're anticipating about nine months of the closure for John Smith Road to construct this bridge. And back to Exit Eight, we will have a interim completion date on that section as well, so that, I think it's about 30 months to construct all of that, and they'll, they'll have a timeframe when they have to have that completed as well. This is the, I-95 Bridges are a major SC-46, we do have sound walls in this area, so this is the only area that we have sound walls. There are about 200, 2,000 linear feet on each side of SC-46 to protect these neighborhoods from roadway noise. Exit Five, we are signalizing the top of these ramps. Right now, there's a free flow right merge on those ramps, we're going to eliminate that and pull everybody into a signal. As we looked at the crash data through here, we noticed a significant amount of the crashes were happening from people trying to do that short merge on the traffic. So we've, we've eliminated that, brought both the entrance and exit ramps into a signal. The other thing is there was currently a frontage road that connects between the on-ramp and off-ramp of the interstate there, we're going to eliminate that, those crossover points, and the frontage road go back behind the QT and tie back into US 17. There is a development to the north of where that roundabout's at, gateway, gateway crossing, I believe is what it is. So, so we've coordinated with them to make sure that, you know, everything is coordinated there, there is a drainage canal there that's having to be relocated that's been coordinated with the city of Hardyville as well. So this is kind of, this is Exit Three and the concept for it. It is a diverging diamond as well, this was developed locally, jointly between Jasper County and the city of Hardyville. So this is a SIP-funded project along with Jasper County, and the city of Hardyville's got a little bit in there as well. So this will tie back into Riverport, north and south, as to be developed locally, and SC DOT will build and, or will construct and own the interchange proper for this interchange. So kind of project updates where we're at, so I'm not going to read all of these kind of, where we're at, so we have submitted, right, our construction plans, we have 100% construction plans that have been submitted, they've been reviewed, they're on the second round of verification, those are due to be completed next week, so we have final plans due on the 28th for this, and then we'll work through all the, basically prep work and getting the proposals and everything together for that over the next six months, getting federal highway approval for it. One thing I'll mention, if I get to go back. When, in November of this, last year, this was designated as a federal highway major project, we put, put additional requirements on it, so that's for any project that's over $500 million total cost. So in doing that, we had to do a three-day risk workshop, we looked at all the risks, we came up with a probability of 70%, you know, 70% of the estimated cost would be under it, so that's the number that we have to use for federal highways for approval for this. There's, there's a financial, financial plan and a project management plan, it's all requirements of those major projects. So, you know, May, you know, we'll get the final approval, in May and June we'll do special revisions. Construction obligation is July, August, September, somewhere, we're still finalizing the construction letting this, winter, winter '24, '25, sometime December to February timeframe, we're going to kind of look at some analysis of construction prices, when we can get the best price for that. So this is our project development process. So we're almost complete with this, we started in early 2022. Typically, these take us roughly 48 to 50 months to go from beginning, from starting a project to letting for construction, we're trying to do for this project in 32 months, so we're, we've accelerated this, we're accelerating the next phases at eight to 21 as well, kind of following those lines. So we're acquiring right-of-way right now, we have to acquire environmental permit, we should have that in the next month or two, and our right-of-way will be certified in late June. And I'll turn it, I guess I'll answer any questions on that part, and then I'll turn it over to Daniel to discuss the resurfacing updates.
Any questions?
When is this going to be able to finish, approximately? From the time you start?
About four and a half years probably, yeah, so 2029, 2030, that timeframe, for the first phase.
And will, when you do Exit Eight, is there going to be a bridge for, you're going to keep the bridge and then work around that?
Correct, yeah, we'll keep the traffic on the existing bridge, build the two bridges adjacent to it, and we will have some weekend, kind of some lane closures, you know, three-day lane closures to build the crossovers. We're not sure exactly when that's being, we're going to look at the traffic data, say, but that may be typically we do those weekends, it may make sense to do those during the week instead of weekends, depending on what season it's in from traffic standpoint.
Okay. We thank you very much. You got one question?
No question.
Oh.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you council members, members of the public for having us here tonight. As Craig mentioned, I just wanted to touch on just some of the resurfacing projects we have in the area. I wanted to start by talking and touching on our project viewer that we have on our internet site. There, you can't, it may be hard to see here, but you can go to, and it has a mapping feature that you can touch on specific projects in your area, it'll, it'll talk about what type of project it is, just kind of high level scope, it'll also have a point of contact, it'll also have a little bit of information if it's under contract or in our planning development process. Before I speak to the resurfacing aspect, I just wanted to touch on a couple of our other projects that certainly have resurfacing built in, but that's not the driving need for it. First is US 321 Deer Ford, Deer Ford Road. As Craig mentioned, it's one of our rural road safety projects, it's a little over 10 miles, it was awarded last August and is scheduled to be completed this November. The general scope is, as I mentioned, it's a safety project, so if you've been through there, we've done lots of clearing and grubbing, the effort there is to flatten out the slope so there's some ability to recover should you leave the road. You'll also have, of course, new asphalt, widen asphalt shoulders, widen more recoverable shoulders, we'll also have additional signage and other safety elements. As you'll see there, there is to note that there is an additional 14-mile rural road safety, the next phase of that same Cotton Hill Road northern section, it's around 14 miles, I haven't seen the details of that scope, but I would expect a lot of similar features in that project, and there currently isn't a timetable that I'm aware of, but it is in the development phase. The other project is a little bit different scope, it's a capacity improvement project, but it's Speedway Boulevard, US 17 there from SC 315 to the Georgia line. That project was awarded back in August of 2020 with a completion date of January of 26. The general scope is, as you probably know, it's commuter route, heavy commuter, so that's driving the capacity needs, but we're widening from two to four lanes, we do have some drainage improvements and some signal improvements which are partly in place there at the intersection with SC 315. Now, a question we get on this project is, you know, we've got road widening projects all over our, our area, and it's a bit odd for one to take this long, you know, August 20, nearly six years or five and a half years of construction for a four-mile segment is pretty extensive. And the reason for that is, is driven by the geotechnical aspect, you know, it's a causeway, so settlement, if you run in through across some of our causeways here in, in our district, you can, you can see the settlement, and if it's not accounted for, then it's going to have pretty severe impacts on what's going on up at the roadway level. So in an effort to mitigate that, we add, and I chose this picture for a reason, it's, there's not much going on, but it kind of demonstrates what is driving the length of this project. You'll notice there, the existing two-lane road, then off to the left is what's going to be the southbound two-lane section. You also see some dirt closest to the picture there on the right side facing You also see some dirt closest to the picture there on the right side facing kind of the ocean side of the marsh. And so what you're seeing there in that dirt is essentially dirt that's more than what's needed. So we're trying to load up the existing ground out there with a whole lot more weight so that it settles basically at an excessive rate. So hurry up, we can hurry up and get that settlement achieved. Now, as far as the current activities, the surcharge on the southbound two lanes is complete. We're still removing certain aspects through that corridor on the southbound side. But as we remove that, we've already got some initial paving going on that side. And the goal there is to switch traffic on both lanes of traffic onto that southbound section while we move over to complete the northbound lanes there. So we've tried to get ahead on the schedule by adding the dirt to the ocean side of the existing road, just to go ahead and start that settlement where we can work and while still keeping it safe for the public. But that's the primary, and that's really the biggest question we get on that project, you know, what is taking so long? There's times where it doesn't realize there's a lot going on. But really, what's going on is that settlement timeframe, and we have some areas that can take as long as eighteen months to settle out. So it's it's just keeping the project pacing along over a longer time. All right, a big part and probably what I get the most questions on week to week and probably the most interest in this group is, how do we choose which routes are getting paved? And, you know, why is work not happening on my road? It's in bad shape. And we get several of those each week. And so I wanted to touch on, and I apologize if some of this is information you're already aware of, but it basically goes to our selection process. So back in two thousand and seven, the legislature enacted Act one fourteen, which did several things. But pertinent to this conversation, it required us to have a prioritization process that basically allows us to rank our roads and determine which routes are most needed with the higher priority routes going first. So I'll touch quickly on the funding aspect. So every year, we have a pavement and improvement program budget statewide. And the way we divvy that money out county by county is each county has a certain length of lane miles on their primary routes, on their federal aid secondary and non-federal aid secondary. And based upon the statewide total and the percent that county has of those type, those three categories, that results in the amount of the overall budget that particular county gets. So that's kind of how the money itself gets distributed. Now, speaking to how the routes themselves are selected, we have a group out of Columbia that comes down and rides our interstate and primary routes every two years or every year. And then our secondary routes are generally rode every other year. And in that process, they determine using several variables what the priority ranking score is. And that's based upon, you know, what quality the asphalt's in, how many potholes are there, where there's failures below the asphalt, you know, how many trucks are on it, the amount of traffic, several variables go into that ranking score. And then from there, it is passed down to our local folks who, between our county maintenance engineers and our asphalt contract managers, who basically adjust those scores based upon local knowledge. And then based upon their budgets, they figure out based upon estimates how many, how much of the routes that are the highest priority they're able to pave in any given calendar year. And I put on the the graphic there, it just kind of briefly summarizes the budgets in Jasper County going back to two thousand and twenty-two. As you can see, it made noticeable improvements and then somewhat flatlined around twenty twenty-three when our sales tax increases ended, topping out at nearly seven million this year. And the other part I put in there because it's very pertinent to this this conversation, Craig touched on it earlier, just the the amount of cost it takes to to build our roads and bridges. The cost for our area or this area right here is for a two-lane road to be reconstructed is around seven hundred and twenty-five to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just for a mile. So just keep that in mind as we progress forward and remembering that budget. And as Craig said, we're making a very big dent statewide, but the cost alone do eat into those additional higher figures pretty substantially. Just again, a brief summary, going back to twenty twenty, what we've done in Jasper County. We've done basically forty-mile center lane that's been completed. We have another thirty miles that's currently under contract. And then our twenty twenty-five program, which comes out this year, and in most cases gets worked on and constructed next year. There's another nine center mile lines that the commission actually approved last week. Just a few projects in the area. These first two are some of our ongoing contracts there. You see SC one seventy Freedom Parkway and SC forty-six. Those are two segments that should get finished up. It's again, I apologize, and I do have a sheet at the back that further and more visibly defines route that routes that's been completed, routes that are under contract, and also routes that are coming up in the near term and are future contracts. Some other contracts that are open right now that on the left there, four sixty-two, that is as part of a CTC project that was funded by the county. And on the right there, sorry, you have another section of four sixty-two that is also on a separate contract. You'll see that a lot of these contracts, because of the inability to get the entire length of the road done in one contract, we have to break them out into several contracts. So you'll see some of these same routes just for taking off different bites of the road and trying to complete it year by year. And then again, these are just some of the more noteworthy ones. There's another upcoming section of two seventy-eight that's programmed and was approved last week by our commission. Just a couple other noteworthy roads there, six oh one Cypress Branch Road, Levi Road, Dawson's Landing, and Hardyville Industrial Park. So again, I have an extra sheet. I'm happy to give to anybody that has a little bit more detail and gives the limits a little bit clearer than what's visible in some of these slides. Point on taking questions?
No question.
Anybody have any questions?
Four sixty-two.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea what what's happened there? We've been told it's going to be paved. It's going to be paved.
So there is, if I recall, two sections of four sixty-two under contract. One of those, I think both sections are being reconstructed. And typically, we do that by replanning and mixing in concrete with the existing base because we can get more mileage done in that fashion. I believe the section, but those two sections, one should finish up in November of this year for the ones that are actively under contract. And then the other, the contract goes out to November of next, I'm sorry, June of next year. So it could happen anytime between now and then, but a lot of times they'll start those contracts that have where they're repairing underneath the road and reconstructing the base. They'll do those through some of the winter months when they they're not able to do the other asphalt paving. They typically start that and then finish up in the spring when they're able to kick back into their asphalt production. So I don't have a specific timetable, but for those two sections, that's the completion timeframes.
What about Freedom Parkway? It used to be one seventy, but now it's Freedom Parkway.
So.
I don't see.
So let me give a second. The section between US seventeen and SC forty-six, that section, that section is the one that should be completed similar to four sixty-two by November. Well, fall completion date is worth their shooting for.
No question.
Okay, we thank you.
Excuse me just one. On that Freedom Parkway on one seventy and all that.
Yes, sir.
Will you make that bend for Levy Road because you see Levy Road there, thirty-four? Is that intersection going to be repaired at the time? Because there's an intersection that's really not an intersection.
Typically, only when we have intersecting roads, unless it's a spec- special circumstance, we'll take it through the radius of the intersecting roads. I'm not as familiar with that particular intersection, so I can give you more details on it if you'd like. But typically, that's what we do. We tie and do whatever improvements are needed up to the radius through just to be useful. Sometimes you go into the next road over, it's hard to chase those out without really doing it, or we do take it through the radius generally.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you very much for coming also. And we hope, do you have copies of this or if someone wanted, can they give you their email address and you send it to them?
Absolutely. I can I can give you my email address.
Okay.
It's Burton, B U R T O N, D as in Daniel, at S C D O T dot org. Questions about any of our existing contracts, also future contracts. I mean, I'm on the construction side myself, so they're typically ready to go and ready to build when they come to us. But we have, because of questions about resurfacing, I've become quite familiar with kind of what's in the pipeline to be done. So if I can't get the question, I know who can get it for you. So feel free to reach out to me with any questions. And again, if there's any specific questions for our projects that are ongoing, I can certainly answer those questions.
Thank you. Just a comment. I have to commend SC DOT. They have this website that you go on and if you have a pothole or something, I don't know if I'm called the right person. You can go in there and tell them that there's a pothole in the road. And I'll tell you, their response is outstanding.
Talking to Mike, Councilman Kemp.
Sorry.
It's outstanding because every time I've told people to do it, they'll call me up and say, guess what? DOT's there repairing the road or repairing the ditch. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
And more people should be doing that.
Well, that's certainly appreciated, you know, on the construction side, but I do deal with our maintenance partners and, you know, they they particularly for certain items, potholes, they have very tight windows that barring anything unforeseen, they try to address as soon as they're made aware of it. And actually, on that spreadsheet, that particular link you're talking about where residents can reach out and input concerns and comments. I can't tell you how often it helps us out when we hear to say, are you guys aware of this issue or this issue? And in some cases, we're not aware, and that helps us to have those additional eyes to know what needs to be addressed and just so we can quickly address it as needed. So that's.
And you've been spot on, I'm telling. You can tell whoever it is. In fact, one person, they had a ditch and they were overflowing and they called me and said, guess what? They're cleaning it. It's just before the rain, so I'm not going to be flooded out. So you really did a good job.
Well, thank you. And I probably won't like this, but Mr. Michael Healy is our resident maintenance engineer for Jasper County, and he heads up those crews, and they do a fantastic jobs.
Thank you.
Mr. Healy, stand up. Let us see who you are. Okay, we thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
No question.
Lot of information. All right, at this time, we're going to have Mr. Dwayne Lee from the Pewsburg, Almo Community to come up. They had called wanting to be on the gender for a few minutes. We were trying to get them on the last meeting, but we lost contact. But our clerk scratched herself out so you can't hide from Jasper County because one is going to find you. So we happy to have you tonight also.
Good to be here. Thank you. We come before your front this evening to with a request and a few concerns. I would like to start off by letting you know a little bit about Pewsburg, Almo, Hardyville Community Center or PAH as we call it. For those who are not familiar with PAH Community Center, which was conceived in nineteen seventy-six. It's a charitable four one, five-on-one seat nonprofit organization. We have different communities within the PAH community. As I mentioned, it starts with Pewsburg, Almo, and at conception, it also included Hardyville. We now have basically Pewsburg and Almo because Hardyville has its own community center now. We also like to make you aware of our mission, and it is to provide a place for the care of preschool children, for working parents, to provide a facility facility for recreations for children and adults, and provide a meeting place for community organization, clubs, and groups. For many years, PAH operated out of a double-wide modular mobile home unit located on four point seven acres of land. It also included a basketball court and playground and equipment, which came from the assistance of Jasper County. Due to vandalism and deterioration conditions of the modular unit and the playground equipment over the years, it deemed the building and equipment unsafe for use, thus leading to the removal of the building and equipment from the property, again, with the assistance of Jasper County. So here we are today on a mission to one day have a state-of-the-art facility constructed on site, a place where our children and our adults can come and have a good place to to take pride in the legacy and have legacy to continue to go for the future years. This will not be an easy task for us to construct a building on that site, and we know that it's going to take time. But in the meantime, it is our goal to improve the site from its current state. Though the basketball court is still in functional conditions, we are in dire need of playground equipment. That's the reason that, one of the reasons that I am before you this evening. This evening, we come before you asking or requesting that Jasper County would be considered providing or purchasing playground equipment for this community. I'm sure that you may know or may not have know, at one point Jasper County did provide assistance for us, but somewhere down the line, we've lost that assistance from Jasper County. We feel as taxpaying citizens, we should be able to obtain some assistance. And we respectfully ask that you consider that. In our, in my driving, I see our neighboring communities, community centers such as Wagon Branch, Tarboro, Levy Limehouse. All these community centers have have updated and improved equipment. Somehow or another, our community center has been stagnated. And as I mentioned before, we're to the point where we've lost our buildings and the playground equipment due to vandalism. We also would like for you to consider in amongst your self-discussion to determine how that we lost that connection with Jasper County to be able to provide assistance to our community. My second topic are is a concern, and it was good to hear the gentleman come before me talking about road pavements and stuff of that nature. But we have a lot of road hazards in dire need of improvement, also dredging of ditches. In our community, there's a lot of potholes. That's a big issue. And the lack of repairs are the repairs, in my opinion, that's not being done correctly. I can remember back in my younger days, as county used to come out to repair potholes, you would see a big dump truck with a small roller machine behind behind the dump truck coming out to do these repairs. Now I see a truck with two guys with a shovel dishing out a little bit of asphalt and tapping it down with a tamping. And that's, I think that's not very the way to do a repair. In our area, there's many secondary roads, and the gentleman talked about these bigger roads that that has been funded for for repavement. But our community are being neglected, these secondary roads, especially in the Pewsburg community. But our community are being neglected, these secondary roads, especially in the Pewsburg community. There's Pewsburg Road, Old Charleston Road, Almooke section, and Almooke is just outrageous. It's ridiculous. Again, I can remember driving school bus back in the days in 92, and I would have to dodge the potholes on Almooke going up Almooke Road. And it's still the same today, and that's been 40 years ago. So we, we ask that you take in consideration of these secondary roads, making sure that they're being looked at and have some type of repair done to them. Another issue is our ditches and our, I guess, roadways. We, we've seen lack of cleaning. Again, back in the days, I can remember that maintenance used to maintain at least the other side of the ditch over to the roadway. Now all we see is just the basic of grass cutting of the shoulders. If you go down a lot of secondary roads, you see, you'll see vegetations growing up inside the ditch, even trees growing up inside the ditches. You can see trees that has fallen over the roadway where they come out, cut the trees off of the road, and push it over on the shoulder. And it stays there for weeks at a time, or even months at a time, before it's cleaned up. We see that oftentimes there's a, a situation where you go down a secondary road and the, the overgrowth of trees on the side is covering the roads. And hardly impassable, you have to go across the center line to get around those, those trees or get away from the limbs of those trees. So we're, we're in a, in a situation where we need to have better maintenance in our area. We know that the budgets get bigger and bigger, the taxes get higher and higher, and the maintenance seems to be less and less. So we ask you to, to consider checking into our roadways in the communities. And lastly, future plans to improve our community. We always hear about future projects in the industrial and commercial areas as well as new residential communities. Where rarely we hear anything of county projects for existing communities. As time has changed, so has rules and regulations on so many different things, such as water and sewer. Because of the change in, in those requirements, septic tank approval is almost impossible. Improvement to the infrastructure in the older communities is a must. Jasper County has allowed Buford Jasper Water to build two water sewer treatment plants in our communities, one on Church Road and the other on Pewsburg Road in the Almooke section. Yet still, we are unable to utilize their service without spending over 20,000 to 30,000 dollars to tap into these lines because they didn't think of the community when they installed those lines and putting in lift stations along the way. So unlike the city residents of Jasper County where it only costs them 200 to 300 dollars to connect to sewer, it costs us in the rural area 20,000 to 30,000 to do the same thing. So with that, we respectfully ask you to take these considerations in mind when you go into your next meeting. And also our request for some assistance in providing playground equipment for the Pewsburg, Almooke community. I thank you for your time, and we ask that you continue to be blessed in what you're doing. Are there any questions?
No question.
Do we have any questions?
Just have one. Where was the land down there? Where was the land?
It's on Old Charleston Highway, just, just before you get to the church, the McAlvery Baptist Church.
Did it used to have like the bookmobile and everything there?
Excuse me?
Did it have?
Yes, we did, yeah, one time during the days. We used to have bookmobile, the lunch, the lunching projects and all that kind of stuff out there.
Mr. Ford, do you have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am. I think I'd like to just get together with this gentleman and go through those issues with him. If you're willing to do that.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. You came at the right time. You got the, the man in the back listening to you. DOT listening because all those road projects he outlined belongs to who Craig? Belongs to DOT. Oh, Lord, he got to look at her. That Craig is a mess. All right, at this time, Ms. Kimberly Burgess. Consideration of resolution, R 202416.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of council. This resolution is to approve the state accommodations tax advisory recommendations and authorizing the awarded funds for the state accommodations tax requests. The tax advisory, accommodations tax advisory committee met on April 17th, 2024 and reviewed several requests from various organizations within the county. The estimated revenue for the fiscal year '24, '25 is approximately $110,000. And of that amount, the first $25,000 plus 5% is allocated to the county. Another 30% is allocated to the Chamber of Commerce, which is the ongoing tourist promotion program. And then the balance of that was $55,250. And we also are allowed to, or actually required to carry over any unspent or estimated funds that are greater than what we spent last year. So we actually in '22, '23 overspent by $10,156. So we're reducing the carry forward by that amount, but we estimate that we would have a carry forward from this year of approximately $55,000, which would allow us $100,093 to allocate. We had $82,000. We had $82,000 of requests. And the state accommodations tax advisory committee reviewed those requests, interviewed the requestors, and then has recommended that, as you see, each of the organizations receive what they requested. So the request amount was $82,000, and the committee recommends the full $82,000. And those are also listed in the resolution. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
I call for a motion.
A motion.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess? You have another one?
Well, I have the local. Of course, I didn't print it, so I have to go through page after page here. So the local tax does not have a committee, is not required to be reviewed by a committee. Those, but we do follow the same requirements that the state accommodations tax requires of us. So we had several different... So these are the, we have several that for, made requests. And some of these have made a request of the state funds as well, that we, we didn't feel like we had sufficient funds in the state. So we moved them over to the local accommodations hospitality tax. And we have, we are anticipating about 210,000 revenue or accommodations tax revenue and approximately 530,000 for hospitality tax, which is a total of 740,000. We do have some unspent appropriations and cash surplus from '22, '23 of about 285,000. We may have some, some this year, but if we do, it'll be pretty close. So I know we have the '22, '23, that was 285, so we have a million 25,241 that we could distribute to the various requesting organizations. Those organizations are listed below and in the resolution, which I still can't get to.
Honey Hill Battlefield. Who is the chairman of that organization?
Ma'am?
Honey Hill Battlefield.
The Honey Hill Battlefield, yes, ma'am.
Friends of Honey Hill Battlefield?
Yes. They have some requests for preservation and restoration projects, so that's 53,000. They also have a tournament fund, the...
You can't find?
There's one for a movie, a movie for the documentary, which is actually coming from the JC 250 Committee for Thomas Hayward Jr. Documentary Film, which would be shown at the Morris Center on the website and other places to bring people into the Thomas Hayward site when it is rebuilt and, you know, remodeled, refurbished, as well as to the Friends of Honey, Friends of Honey Hill and the Morris Center. So they're hoping that that would bring people in. We had Gold Soccer, which is a tournament, Gopher Hill Festival, which is annual. Then you see the others listed there, the Jasper County Chamber of Commerce, various expenditures or expenses that they have, including a concert series. The Keep Jasper County Beautiful is a marketing program for the litter, litter prevention. And the Operation Patriots FOB Concert for Heroes. They've made, most of that is for marketing for some of the venues, restrooms, et cetera. And then there's amounts for the airport and improvements to Exit 33. And we also use these funds to pay for the lights at Exit 33.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
I have one quick question. With the lion's share of this going to the airport, what is that earmarked for?
That pays a loan that, it was a grant, and part of it, we had a grant, and then the county had to match it. So we have a loan and, or bond, and that pays for that. It's earmarked to pay for that.
And we've been doing that for a couple of years.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, it was an ordinance that was passed in 2022. It's an ordinance O 2022-08, and it provides that the local accommodations and hospitality taxes pay $350,000 for these, for the bond.
Just to add to that, just for clarification, that's $350,000 a year, right?
Yes.
So the, it goes for what, 30 years, 20 years? Whatever. Let's say it's 10 years. Let's say 10 years. Okay. So that, that's, on the books, you have 30,000 each year, and then you have expense of 30, 350,000 a year, right? So that goes away in 10 years. It doesn't decrease as the time goes along. It's when the bond stops.
So this is actually, it's, it's a, we call it a bond, but it's actually a loan from the South Carolina, South State Bank. So they issue, it's a loan, and we pay $350,000. So it reduces the principal and then the interest that's due. So we pay, it's just like if you had a car loan and you pay extra principal. That's what we're doing.
Okay.
So we're, every year, we pay that 350, regardless of what the loan payment is.
Okay.
No questions.
No, okay, questions are finished. I'm going to call for a motion. We're going to call for a motion.
Motion.
You'll hear a second.
Second.
All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're down to the second reading. And public hearing. Ms. Burgess, that's you again.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, okay, if I sit here, I have a lot of, some different things. Thank you. So this is the second reading of the budget order. Okay, so I prepared a memo for this as well that I'm sure each of you received or hope all of you received. In this budget, the millage rate was reduced by one mill from 140 to 139, which resulted in a $260,000 reduction in property taxes from $36,404,900 to $36,144,900. The cash carry forward increased 946,000 from 4 million, from, yes, 4,923,052 to 5,869,052. The sheriff department SRO revenue increased $260,000 for reimbursement anticipated from local schools. And the total budgeted property tax revenue was allocated to three, three accounts. The property taxes, which is account number 1502, auto taxes, which is 1503, and watercraft, which is 1630. There were some additional expenditures. Actually, one was just a transfer from one account from, or one department, 46, which is fire rescue, to Department 56, which is emergency services. The community risk department was reduced $100,000, resulting from the removal of an anticipated code enforcement software. And then there was an increase in professional liability insurance premium for the med physician in Department 56. And the sheriff department, we increased it a million dollars for 10 new deputies and $81,000 in gas, oil, and grease. We also included the fee schedule, which you had not seen until the budget workshop. And that has been revised to the proposed amounts, which, I hope you can see that. I don't show the increases in this or don't have the increases highlighted because we did that at the budget workshop, but I just wanted to show you that we have, unless there's any changes that you have, that has been finalized. And then I wanted to, we talked about standards, some state mandates. And I have a sort of a chart... And I have a, sort of a chart for that that I wanted to show you. This is what the state, it's, it's busy. And I'm not the best chart person, I will admit. But this is a, these are all the state mandates and they total 13 million, net of 13,383. And the net is the amount of revenue that some of these departments earn, as well as the million 350 that we get from the local government fund. And the largest part of this state mandate is that tan or orange, and that's the Sheriff Department. Net of fees and reimbursements is 8,949,300. Also had a few other, the, I'm gonna show you the revenue. This is the revenue and it is, on the right here is the county property taxes. And it's approximately 50% of the revenue. And then other revenue sources are over on the, on the left. And those, there's many, but the ones that I wanted to highlight, we had, we get the fee in lieu, which is 2,100,000, that local government fund of a million three, local option sales tax of 4.8, delinquent taxes of a million, and then the larger, two of the larger ones are the EMS, emergency telecommunications of a million 25, the register of deeds is a million. And then that also includes almost $5 million in cash carry forward. And I have one other one that was, was just basically another chart, kind of show you here the, so the largest part of our budget is the emergency services at 34%. The sheriff is 19% of that. Administration is, oh, many different departments. It's not just the ones that are named administration there, and that's 13%. And elected officials are 5%, development services again are 5%. The detention center is nine. Then we had some small agency appropriations are five, magistrates are one, and engineering services is 7%. So I just thought you'd like to see how that all breaks out.
Okay.
And then, so that's everything unless you have anything for the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna open the floor to the public, see if they have any questions about the budget.
Thank you for the translation.
So to thank your counsel for.
Welcome.
The chance to speak. My name is John Harper. I live in Hartigal, the lower end of Jasper County. I've lived in Jasper County for 96 years, minus the years I was in the army. Some, I'm guessing some 20 years ago, I used to come to all of the council meetings. And at one of the meetings one night, there was a man from point south. He had a complaint against a neighbor who had either a junk car or dilapidated motorhome, I don't remember which. And immediately after he complained about that, as soon as the council could, I don't think any of you own it, Ms. Clark might have been, I don't think so, they passed an ordinance against derelict vehicles. Now, after they passed it, I got up and told them I did not believe that they were going to enforce it. I didn't believe they would because of the magnitude of towing as many junk cars as it was. There was many of them then, there's many more today. I would say in the lower part, south of Hartigal, Levy, Bellinger Hill, and Pewsburg, there's hundreds of dilapidated cars, trucks, vehicles. And since they passed that law, I've never known of one, never known of it being enforced until last week. I have here a copy of a citation that was placed on the door of a 90-year-old lady. She lives by herself. She has one car she drives, and then one car in the yard that belongs to her nephew. She told me that the nephew pays taxes on that car every year. I don't know if that makes any difference. But what I'm here to ask you, what triggered this lady to get this citation when nobody else is charged? I have, I have a chair and it says, she's got until May the 30th to either move it or something, I can't read what the officer said.
Mr. GW, would you get with Mr. Fulgham and give him the information and let him find out what took place that caused her to get this citation? Would you get with Mr. Fulgham, you know him, right?
Yeah, I know Mr. Fulgham.
Yeah, get with him. Give him the paperwork and how to contact him and everything, and we'll see what's going on, because right now, tonight, we don't have a clue.
Well, I would just like to know what triggers this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't, we don't know.
Being forced if they're going.
That's right.
It's ridiculous.
That's right. Thank you. Going, the open floor to the public going once, going twice, going three times, close to the floor, public floor. Okay. Now. Well, you finished?
So we have to, I guess you have to take a vote on the reading, second reading?
Oh, we have to, um, at this time, call for motion on the second reading of the budget.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to have a discussion before the vote.
Go ahead and discuss.
Okay. Thank you very much for separating the car revenue from the.
You're welcome.
Okay. But we haven't listed any other, other items. We didn't do it by item. We just did a lump sum. Last time we asked, I asked for the be broken out, the expenses be broken out.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand which, which expenses.
Just, if you have a million dollars, I want to, and you say you're gonna do something, I want to see that broken out. Let me see if I can find an example.
I, I'm not sure that we could do that because we'd have to have an account number for every item.
Mm-hmm. That's what Andy said.
Our chart of account was, would be this big.
Then how do I know what you're doing, except to put the dollar amount? And I'll give you an example. Last year, we put in for AEDs. This year, we put in the same, we're putting in again for AEDs.
Yes, sir. And we have an invoice for $153,000 for AEDs that crossed my desk today. So you'll see it.
I understand. So is it, so is it, if it's there, so we don't need next year's AEDs, right?
Well, we do have to have maintenance on them, yes.
But it, it says for purchase. If you look in your, it says for purchase.
Let's hope it's all. I, I saw the, I saw the invoice. I'll have to go back and discuss it with the fire chief to make sure.
It was 100, I think we put in 140 last year for it, so it's $10,000 over.
Over.
Okay. How much money do we have in the general fund? I know we have to keep, the state says, not require, but suggest 25% we have to keep in general fund. How much do we have in the general fund?
In the fund balance?
All I'm saying, I, I'm not a, I'm not using the right nomenclature. But the state requires that, or doesn't require, it suggests that we keep 25% in a general fund to.
That's the fund balance.
Take care of FEMA if there's something going on. If we have a hurricane or something like that. How much do we have in the general fund for that? Or do we have enough?
That's the fund balance, that's not the general fund.
It's the fund balance.
Can you tell me?
I'm gonna say 17 million, but let me, I'm gonna go back.
Isn't that our finance manual that we got on the budget?
Uh, the fund balance, no ma'am, the fund balance was probably not in there, but it is in the, and I don't know what it is this year yet because we're not at the end of the year.
Right.
And, but I can tell you last year, I want to say, if I, as soon as I say something, I'll say the wrong, I'll say the wrong amount. So I was gonna say 17 million, I'll redouble check. 10. Sorry. Of course, I can't put my hands on it. I'll have to get back with you. I'd rather, I don't want, I'll let you know by the end of the meeting.
Okay.
It's somewhere, I just can't put my hands on it.
Before, we got in the meeting.
On the sheriff's revenue, this is something else. On the sheriff's revenue, you have the SRO for salary and, and grant for $760,000. But if you go to the sheriff's department for the expenditures, you don't show SRO.
Because it falls through the various line items on the, like salary and wage line item.
I understand.
Falls through the equipment, the vehicles, it's not segregated.
But we should segregate it because that grant is only supposed to be used for that money. So it would be a paper trail that we would use. That's what I'm trying to get at. It shows that we are giving money. We are getting money from a grant and we should be giving money, we should show the expenditure of that money. Am I correct or not? And we can't lump it.
So some of it is, $500,000 is the grant, and then 260 is what's actually billed to the schools and then reimbursed by the schools, so that's not a grant, they're just paying for the services.
I understand.
So one thing that we do, that we, for other grants or projects like that, is we have a separate, what we call a project. So we could identify that, we do identify that, actually set it up as a separate account or a separate project where we accumulate the account, the expenditures and the revenue, and then at the end of the year, that's moved forward. So I can provide that to you as a separate report that wouldn't necessarily have to be a part of the budget, but could just be a report that shows you how much was in that project, which would capture all of that.
Well, what, I'm just trying to save time because if you, we're supposed to get a report every month about the budget, what's, what we've done on the budget.
So you get the financial statements, right?
And it's just a lump. It's not the dollar amount, it's what's being spent that I have to worry about. But anyway.
So I, the unassigned fund balance for, at the end of June 2023, was 15,145,475.
So that's just, that's the 25% that we have, are suggested we require, correct?
So, well, there's restricted, yes, there's a restricted and an assigned, so that the total fund balance is 23,612,379. But the unassigned is 15 million.
Unassigned is 15 million. So we have 15 million, which is almost 100% of the budget that we could use.
Fifteen, one five.
Oh, I thought you said 50, okay.
Not 50.
We thank you, Ms. Burgess. We've been here a long time.
Well, we're gonna be here a lot longer.
And maybe not.
Yes, we are. You can't stop me.
I call for a motion on the budget.
I'll motion.
You motion it? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second on the budget?
Who with a second?
All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No. You have to call for.
Say what?
You have to call for the negative.
Put him down as no, please.
I did. And thank you.
You're welcome. Where are we? This name hit me so confused. At this time, we're gonna open the floor. Huh? Or is it your time?
I believe this is where we need to interject the consent agenda. It was moved from the consent agenda?
No, we didn't move it. It failed.
No, it, the motion was, and if you want to, it was motion was to remove that and approve the agenda, the consent agenda.
It failed for a lack of a second.
So the consent agenda failed? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying the move.
Well, you can't make it up. You just can't make it up.
John Kemp, hold it. Don't holler at me tonight.
I'm gonna holler you if you don't stop.
Not tonight, this is not tonight. I don't feel well, don't do it.
Then don't come, if you don't feel well, don't come.
Don't do it. Now, what we need to do, David? To satisfy the.
For clarity, if there's an item that is in dispute on the consent agenda, you've already approved it, approved it again with the discussion by Mr. Kemp, if you want to allow that item to be put on as 11A.
How can we have an consent agenda when we have a presentation? Just tell me that.
I'm not disputing that, I'm, I'm saying procedurally, Madam Chair, if you desire to, you can hear this as a separate item, 11A, and I, I don't know if that's, I don't know what it is, I don't know, presentation, it was just present of a report, I don't know what the item was.
I don't know what it is, so. If I don't know any.
I'm having trouble with my iPad, the agenda to pull up.
It's number 18.
Number 18, which would have, if it's off the consent agenda, it's 11A, if it's on the consent agenda, it was 18. I would suggest for clarity, not to impose on your prerogative, Ms. Burgess, give the presentation.
Ms. Burgess, give us an update.
Yes, ma'am.
What is for?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bid for a fuel farm directional bore that we advertised for sealed bids for a directional bore of approximately 625 feet from Gray's Highway to the location of the airport fuel farm located at Ridgeland Claudine Airport. The bids were due on May 8th, 2024 at 3:00 PM. We received one bid. That bidder is Cab Installers with a bid of $17,573.04, excluding any applicable sales tax. And the staff recommends that the county council accept the bid from Cab Installers in the amount of $17,573.04 and authorize the county administrator to execute all documents necessary to complete the project.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Call for a motion.
No questions.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna open the floor to the public. Mr. Smithy Kula and this other name on here, John W., oh, that was Harper.
Madam Chair, council members, as you recall, back in February, you graciously approved the Jasper County 250's request for a cost share with the South Carolina 250 Commission in the pursuit of their major site grant for the improvement and promotion of the Tomb of Thomas Hayward Old House Site. On behalf of the Jasper County 250 Committee, I am pleased to announce that we have been awarded this major site grant for a site of national importance, well as state and local. On May 3rd, we presented the strategic plan for the site to the South Carolina 250 Commission and were unanimously approved for $147,000. This funding, along with the support of Jasper County's cost share commitment, will allow us to begin realizing our goal of transferring, transforming, rather, this site into a historical centerpiece for our county. It will serve as a Class A historical and cultural interpretive center for the citizens of Jasper County and our visitors, both for the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution in Jasper County, as well as a long-term preservation and promotion of this asset. Although much pre-work on the site has been done, we will officially begin the process this Friday by meeting at the site with the Lamar Institute Archaeological Team. From there, we will begin the process of planning and implementing an array of improvements as outlined in the strategic plan, which was presented to you back in February. We expect completion of the project to take approximately one year. To further update you on the effort. To further update you on the efforts of the J.C. two-fifty Committee, interpretive signs for the Revolutionary Battle of Pewsburg and the history of Marooners community there are currently in the process of scholarly review and production. In addition, the state historical marker signed for the Revolutionary Battle of Cusahatchie is in the approval and production phase with the South Carolina Department of Archives and History. Now that the infrastructure development is well underway, we will direct more attention to research and promotion of the Prevo invasion of President A Jasper County as our primary cultural heritage tourism theme, as well as ramping up our marketing, education, and event planning efforts. To date, with the outstanding support of the Jasper County Council and staff, as well as many other local and state entities, we are well on our way toward a proper observance of the Sester Centennial of the American Revolution in Jasper County, celebrating and promoting its role by educating, engaging, and inspiring our citizens and visitors. We will keep you updated and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kula. Let's give them a hand. Marvelous job. Okay. Mr. Andrew Fulgham, administrators' report.
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you. I had just three items on my report. One was about exit three and the report on the status of the escrow draws. Three point four million was the entire amount. Approximately forty percent of that's been expended, sixty percent remain. On the Jasper County Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, the council had a workshop on that. I was pleased that the staff participated in a review of that draft document with some interested parties. And we are proposing that you will have it in a form to bring back to you for adoption on June the third. We would adopt that by a resolution. Specifically, we met with members of the Gullah and Latino Advisory Council and reviewed it with them. And so they would like to come and make a presentation as well at your next meeting on June the third. And the final item was the transportation sales tax with a green belt element effort. The staff is continuing to work refining the ordinance for your consideration of second reading, public hearing, and then final reading in July. Number of items that we clarified, and I appreciate your time and assistance as I individually talked to you about these things, defining the term for fifteen years, the amount of total collections, which we've had some discussion about. Two additions to the road project lists and the bonding amount, we're working with bond council on to determine. And then, of course, the green belt language, which has been defined for the ordinance for your consideration. So we look forward to advancing that. We'll be individually contacting you on some potential special county council meeting dates to address the second, third readings. Madam Chair, that concludes my report, unless, of course, any of you have any questions about my report.
Don't have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No question.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna call for the adjournment of the council meeting. Need a motion?
I don't vote.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night. Y'all, y'all